Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council, held January the 10th, 2017. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda.
Moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker, that council approves the agenda for this regular meeting of January 10th, 2017, as presented. All favor?
Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, you're going to speak on the KPMG.
Yes, as you know, we are bringing a couple of the items from KPMG recommendations to each meeting to have discussion and review. And today we are discussing the shoulder season ice type of recommendation. I'm going to ask Bonnie to come up and give a quick... After Bonnie, when my agenda comes up and then process improvements, that KPMG will be...
When Oscar was here and meeting with the different departments, when he met with our department, he said that many different municipalities look at what they consider shoulder seasons as kind of a premium time. And it's up to each municipality to determine when their shoulder season is. But what his explanation was, when minor hockey and figure skating, which are the youth biggest groups, when they start their season, that's regular season. When they're finished their season, that's the end of regular season. So things on the outside of that is what he considers to be shoulder season. So for us in Kirkland Lake, that would be, we put the ice in in August and we run a few hockey schools. In the spring, it stays in typically until the end of regular season for most of the hockey teams. And then we keep it a little bit longer and we allow the old timers to keep using it, figure skaters keep using it, pickup leagues keep using it, a little bit more into the month of April. So what his suggestion was, was to look at surcharging. So in...to determine if that was a good way to go or not, I thought we'd look at the comparators, because that's what Oscar had done. So you'll see the chart that I've listed here showing our comparators. I've also included a couple of other municipalities in the north, just because they do, they do have shoulder season charges. So there's a range. Some of them are very small. Some of them are just a few dollars more, $10 or $15 more an hour. Some of them are quite a bit higher. I know in southern Ontario, shoulder season ice is typically quite a bit higher. You're getting well into the 250 and 300. So that is an option. The other option is looking at, can we reduce our ice season a little bit? The main reason we want to look at that is to get our costs down. So what I've indicated here, when we're looking at utility costs for the time period that the, that the ice is in, in the spring and the fall, the utility cost itself is costing us about $15,000. So we're not making anywhere close to that in revenue. It's really tough when, when the ice is quiet. If you look at our usage, the first two weeks of April are fairly busy. The last two weeks of April are very quiet. In August as well, it depends on when we book our hockey schools. Last year, we booked the first week of August and the third week of August, based on when the request came to us and when the people were available. If we could tighten that up and put it right the last two weeks before school, then that just means we don't have to put our ice in as early. So who won't have the ability to use ice? For the most part, it's going to be those people who just like to get on the ice nice and early and stay on till the bitter end. So a lot of our rec leagues, they'll stay on right till the end. The seniors will stay on right to the end. The figure skaters that are doing a final test day at the end of the season, they'll stay as long as they can on the ice. And then in the summer, it just depends on what the weather's like, whether we get pickups or not. Typically, it's the hockey schools. Last year, we did have the gold miners that were going to do their tryouts, but they didn't. They canceled. So they didn't start until September. Minor hockey didn't start until September last year. So it looks as though the, the regular use is going to be satisfied with approximately a September to an end of March season. What I'm suggesting for this year, because we're already in it, is that we look at trying to cut two weeks off each of those months for this year, and then monitor and really take a good hard look at who's using the ice, who would be affected, would it negatively affect them, and at what cost? And then determine if we could go from a September to end of March season for 2018. Not sure if I missed anything that you...
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, Bonnie, have we talked to the user groups?
Not at all.
Traditionally, is it just pickup hockey or the rec league using it?
In April?
Not cable gold miners, is it?
Whatever all of our comparators do, and what we would do, of course, is we would keep the ice in until the end of, I mean, however far they made it in their playoffs, we wouldn't, we wouldn't take ice out prior to that for any team, whether, I mean, we don't have rep hockey anymore, so they are finished quite early. But even last year, minor hockey was finished the first weekend of March break. So finished early in March. And gold miners last year, of course, was long for them, but we would ensure that it stayed in as long as their run went. So if they made it right to the Dudley, we'd keep ice in a little longer.
Counselor Morgan?
Thanks, Bonnie. This, I appreciate this coming back. The hockey schools that are in in August, those are for profit, right? I mean, those are a business?
One of them is, and one of them, we Parks and Rec run ourselves.
Oh, okay.
So the Christian Athlete is the first one, and that's a full week. And that is a, we rent them the ice at a regular ice rental rate. And the second one, we had been asked over the years, it was mostly by parents, because minor hockey wasn't able or wasn't interested in doing it, could we run a hockey school? But we make sure we run it where we make the 60%. So we're not, we're making money.
Okay.
But we're not making anywhere close to the utility costs.
Well, that's, that's it. Yeah, exactly. And, and most of the other users are adults, right? Like in the spring particularly?
Yes, except figure skating. Figure skating does stay on.
So, so to carry through and have, say, the same rate for youth, but crank up the adult rate, would that accomplish the same thing, or?
We, we did look at surcharges, and I looked at, okay, if we did do a surcharge of, you know, say $30 or more an hour, what kind of extra dollars are you bringing in? It's so minimal based on use. It's just a drop in the bucket compared to that $15,000 utility bill that I, my preference was not to do that, because I just thought every time we do a surcharge, we get people coming back to council saying it's too much.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, then what you're suggesting is not to do any surcharge, just, and just...
Shorten the season.
Shorten the season right up. Okay, fine, that's great.
Two weeks April, two weeks August this year, which is a month, that's $15,000 that we should see in utility savings. And then consider perhaps another month, two weeks again for next year. But we would have to listen to the users for sure, make sure we weren't, hopefully, making a situation where they, they needed ice somewhere else.
I agree completely. The only suggestion or comment that I want, I want to leave with is just, if it is the adults that are pushing this later in the spring, then I don't have a problem charging them extra, as you know.
Yes.
Any other comments?
So Bonnie, just if we, the, the Christian hockey school, if it is decided that we want to look more forward at shortening it two weeks at each end, would they be notified, like, really soon?
They've already booked for this year, and they still fit in that window. So la, it was last year that the program we ran, based on the instructor from New Lisker, he was available right after the civic holiday, and then Christian Athlete went the week right after. Christian Athlete, we already bumped them one more week, and we've let our instructor know from Lisker that that first week wouldn't be available. So he's quite willing to go the week right before school. So this year, we had our ice available, I think it was the second or third of August. For 2017, we're projecting the 14th, and that will still accommodate both schools. So we're not bumping anyone. We're just asking them to go a little later. And it's still prior to both board schools starting.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Certainly. Counselor Morgan?
So at the end of what this complete phase in, you're looking at saving roughly $30,000 then, right?
Yeah. This year, we should see 15, and next year, if we do it, and I mean, we'll have to start talking to the user groups now, to say this is what we're looking at.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a resolution that Ryan's gonna...
So moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker, that council directs the Director of Community Service to implement a shorter season for 2017 by approximately two weeks in April and two weeks in August, and continue to monitor, consider shortening the season from September 1st to March 31st in 2018. All in favor?
And that'll come back as a bylaw then, next meeting, right? Do we have to make a bylaw for that, Bonnie, or? No? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Jen is going to come up and talk about process improvements.
Hey, I'm just going to, just go back. I, I skipped a couple, I want to keep the meeting in the proper sequence, and I skipped a couple points here. Just, is there any declaration of community area interest? None? And any petitions and delegations that there was not? Okay, sorry.
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan, that council accepts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held December 20th, 2016. All favor?
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Okay, Jen, sorry about that delay. The floor is all yours.
That's okay. So also, when Oscar came here, he did, in part of his meeting, he met with a lot of the staff members, and he did a lot of process mapping, just to see how our processes were flowing at the various departments. And in the many departments that he talked to, they all essentially flow back into Treasury. So there was the last couple slides in his report that I tried to address each one of the points about process inefficiencies. We have, we've been talking about the Vatom software system, and one of the biggest process inefficiencies was around purchase orders and our purchasing and procurement bylaw or policy. So we've implemented electronic purchase orders across all departments in the town, since, in, starting in November 2016. We've been slowly implementing, but now everybody's on it, except for the library at this point in time. So that's a huge efficiency for us. We're seeing a lot of savings. We're not printing, we don't have paper purchase orders floating around. And it's not, I don't have a great dollar figure like Bonnie has. It's more about time-saving efficiencies throughout the departments. And also, just being able to control and know where those purchases sit towards the year end, that was all, always a comment from our auditors, that we kind of never knew how many more purchases were outstanding at the end of the year. So now, with the implementation of the purchasing order module, we'll be able to say, okay, February 10th, we're closing off our accounts payable. We know what we, what bills we still have to pay, because before, with everybody and their paper purchasing, purchase orders, it just didn't flow to Treasury as efficiently as it could have. So those are some more efficiencies that we're not going to see dollar value savings for, just more control-type issues. A few, there, there was a few items that he kind of maybe touched on, that I felt that perhaps the process may not have been exactly mapped as he had defined in his report. So I just clarified a few things, you know, that, that, you know, invoices are not being matched without, or, in making sure that the proper approvals are being taken before we're paying things. That's something that's always been done. We've got, that's something that we monitor in the Treasury Department very carefully. We've got two, sometimes three sets of eyes reviewing everything. So just wanted to clarify a few of the things. And as noted, he talked about the purchasing and procurement policy. Well, we had recently reviewed that in 2015, so I felt that that addressed some of the issue, or some of the points in here as well. I will be bringing your report to council, not until towards the end of February, once our accounts payables are closed off, and then we can report on the full year of 2016. So that's something that hasn't been done annually, but I will start with that again. Also, I, I think something that he talked about was fuel utilization. And again, there were some changes over at the Works Department, and our purchasing agent has a very detailed process map, or process of how fuel is to be recorded, and, and how the foremans and supervisors are well aware of all of those processes. So now that everything's documented and laid out, we always did have the control over the fuel, but now it's identified in some actual processes. So it's, it's laid out for everybody. And one of the biggest things that he was, Oscar had highlighted, and because lots of other public or private companies, and maybe other municipalities do, I don't know of any, was procurement cards. And I feel very strongly about the, I don't advocate for them at all. And as indicated in my report, mostly because we've stopped the use of Visa and MasterCard at the town hall, in order for us to try and save money, because our banking fees were growing out of control when we had residents paying for their water and taxes on their Visa and MasterCard to earn, earn their Avion points or whatnot. So by using purchase cards, which is essentially a Visa or MasterCard around town, we're trying to earn reward points on the backs of the municipality. So that, that's why we don't. We have accounts set up at most vendors in town locally here, and like I said, we are now processing payments via electronic funds transfer, and many of the local vendors, pretty much all the local vendors are signed up for that, and appreciate the timely payment that they receive. So it's no better to pay by Visa than to pay by electronic funds transfer. And we are seeing a huge save, well, not a huge, but enough savings with our, our postage costs by now doing EFT and reducing the number of checks. And potentially, in the future, as, through attrition, we may see the change in some of the timelines of processing accounts payable invoices, but at this point in time, our process is sufficient for our needs right now. So is there any questions surrounding any of the points that were brought about by KPMG?
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, just a comment, Jen. Implementing the purchase order program will, I think, speed up the process, as you said, for the accounts payable, because we always seem to be stretched into March and April, where we're waiting, where we haven't been billed. We're trying to get a, get the budget done. So this will give us a clearer picture going, going forward to, to work on budget and hopefully eliminate some surprises, but...
Yeah, that's the goal, to eliminate the surprises at the beginning of February.
Yeah, I think this will definitely be an improvement.
Okay, thank you, Jen. And I think, you know, hearing from Jen and, and Bonnie at Parks and Rec, that, you know, it shows that staff and council are taking the KPMG report very seriously, and that we've made a, a target to look at processes at, I believe, at each of our meetings going forward, starting a few meetings ago. So I think it's, it tells that we didn't do the report or the, to get the consultants in, in Maine. It's, it's something that we're moving, certainly moving forward with. Okay, the next, oh, yes.
Sorry. Can you just kind of refresh my memory? Is Oscar supposed to be coming back here to do a follow-up? Or is he, he's finished? His last?
Yeah, yeah. I think he is. He's done his, his part. And now it's up to us to carry the ball. Yeah. Thank you. Ryan, we have two TMA resolutions. I'll speak to them briefly. We have two TMA, two resolutions from the TMA, and fairly often, our committees, our regional committees, put forth resolutions that they pass, and they ask the, the corpor, or the town to support these as well. So Ryan's going to read them, and, and we'll, we'll go forward with these resolutions.
Okay, moved by Counselor Barker, and seconded by Counselor Morgan, whereas the District of Temiskaming has to pay the highest rate of electricity delivery charge because of the low density levels in many areas of the district. Therefore, Council of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports Temiskaming Municipal Association in its petition to the Province of Ontario to reduce the delivery rates of this very essential utility. All in favor?
Thank you.
The second is moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker, whereas the North, Northern Eastern Ontario Rail Network is endeavoring to bring the issue of rail passenger service for northeastern Ontario area to the attention of Queens Park and Parliament Hill, so as to restore it. Therefore, Council of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports Temiskaming Municipal Association and the NEORN in their quest to restore needed rail passenger service to areas of northern Ontario. All in favor?
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Director of Economic Development Tourism, Wilf, are you going to come up and speak to the Fire Services Master Plan? And Rod's got to come up, too?
Insofar as it deals with the fire department, I think the chief is far better qualified to answer specific questions on that. We were asked to put together a request for proposal for Fire Services Master Plan, and you find what that was in my report. Put that out in the fall, and despite advertising it fairly well, we only had one response. We tried to nego, that response came in quite far in excess of our comfortable amount that we want to put towards us. We did try to negotiate down, still was not in line with our expectations. We wanted to know what went wrong, so we went out and contacted other companies and asked them for, straight up, why did you not apply? And answer in general terms was that, well, timelines, commitments, just wasn't really fitting into their picture. We used that opportunity to discuss with them, okay, well, did we do something wrong? How did we get you engaged? No, RFP was fine. It was just, they needed to talk to us independently, and just to see how their own plans would shape up. As it is, we do have now two, potentially three companies, that would be willing to do the work. They would be using the same RFP terms as what we did at Release, but we're under a time crunch, because they're fulfilling, or they're filling their calendars right now for their work going into 2017 and 2018. So we have a very limited timeframe to engage anybody. So we're asking for council's approval to negotiate up to $75,000 for the delivery of a Fire Service Master Plan for the community. Once we do secure anything, obviously, we bring it back to council. And if we cannot do it for that num, for that amount, then again, we'll reevaluate how we go about this. Would you like to add anything to that? I think I got it.
I think you got everything.
Counselor Roman?
May I just ask how much the, the one bid came in at?
I honestly would not like to answer that, because it could affect the other bits coming in, if I could say that.
Could you say if it was significantly higher?
It was significantly, significantly higher.
Just, I have a question just to Rob, is, Master Plans, is this new to Kirkland Lake? Have I do, when's the last time we did a, a Fire Service Master Plan? Would it be within 15 years that you've been with the community?
No, it would have been before that, if we did get one done.
And is this something that's encouraged?
It is, yeah. Yeah. It'll be, like, they'll provide a, like, guides to how to move forward over the next five, 10 years.
Okay, so it sort of gives us a roadmap with regards to fire services and protection?
We did look at, could we do it ourselves? We looked at engaging just the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office. They're short-staffed, so that's not going to happen. The level of complexity that's involved in it, it's beyond our capabilities. Yet the OFM does recommend that every community have one, and certainly as you're moving forward, and it's, will, as Rob said, give you a roadmap for doing so.
Any other question? Yes, please?
If I could just add to that, we, we haven't done a Fire Master Plan for over 20 years in, in the Town of Kirkland Lake, and since that time, our, our population has significantly changed. The type of buildings and materials that we have have, have changed. We have demolished a number of old buildings that we don't have anymore. And as well, the new practices of fire safety and fire detectors and education and that have come into play and changed the picture from what it was more than 20 years ago. So I think it's very timely that we do a Fire Master Plan for our community, and make sure that we do have the proper resources, equipment, in place, and we're keeping our community safe.
Counselor Roman?
No, I'm in agreement that, that, you know, we could use this report. $75,000, to me, though, just seems like a lot of money for, to, to study just one aspect of the municipality. And is that typical? Have you talked to any other municipalities about?
Yes, we have. A capous casing spent in excess of $100,000.
Really?
And there, most of the other communities that we've spoken to are anywhere from that $50,000 to $100,000 mark. Very few are at the $50,000 mark. It, you're, you're buying the expertise of the companies. It involves anything from legal, to PR, to GIS, to usually two or three retired fire chiefs, risk management processes and exploration, a lot of data collection. So I understand that you do have a lot of hands in working on the project, but it's also a niche market, to be honest, and that has affected the market price.
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, Wilf, so part of that study, they take similar-sized communities or a number of households similar to what KPMG did in this case?
I couldn't speak to that clearly. I don't know, Rob, if you can, but they do have, from the criteria and the standards that are established by the province, as to what should be, could be, would be, and that is what they're measuring it against. And so it's, just because another community of a similar size has, I don't know, condition X, doesn't mean it applies to you. What, what does apply to you? So it's much more personalized than the KPMG study, in my understanding.
It sounds a bit like supply and demand for that service being offered. They have the expertise, as you said. There's not a lot of companies or individuals supplying that service.
Exactly. And because of that, the timelines for these companies, they usually are booked two, three years in advance. And at the timeframe that could be used, I mean, the one that we talked to today is 14 months. So, you know, once they've committed, it's very difficult to get them back in. But we were concerned, I was concerned very much, that there was something in the RFP that just turned everybody off. It wasn't that case, and that's why I'm bringing it back to council within the, in terms of the procurement policy, that we are using exactly the same terms, the same conditions, as was advertised, and would be following the same process. It's just instead of advertising again for two or three weeks, we'd like to just go and talk to the companies and hold a competitive process within that context.
So today, you're looking for direction to go up to a maximum of 75?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know, again, I, I think to have the Fire Services Master Plan is extremely important to our community, our, this council, and also councils going forward. Gives them building blocks on how that it'll go forward with them. Any other questions, or should I, we have the resolution read?
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan, that council directs the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to negotiate a contract for the development of a Fire Services Master Plan for a price not to exceed $75,000. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, are you going to come up and speak to proposed community standards bylaw?
So this report is a proposed community standards bylaw. So the original Clean Yards bylaw was passed in 2010, and we've had some success with that, and also some challenges with enforcement as well. And there was other bylaws that we wanted to consolidate within this and call it a community standards bylaw. So you'll see within the bylaw that we're, there's some changes in definitions to make it clear what, what they are, as well as be more specific in areas where we had challenges with enforcement and make, I guess, interpretation of what the bylaw read between the enforcement, between OPP, Special Constables, and the Bylaw Enforcement Officer. Portions of property standards were brought into that, the Clean Yards bylaw, or the Community Standards bylaw, more specifically for enforcement issues. The Property Standards bylaw remains, that doesn't go away. But if this is adopted, we would then repeal the Clean Yards bylaw. We'd need some time to get the short form wording done for ticketing, and all those areas would come back to council, so they're aware of the areas that would be enforceable by ticketing, as opposed to a court process through the property standards, or Clean Yards bylaw. through the Property Standards or Clean Yards Bylaw in these areas. So the highlights of it are the inoperable vehicles. Challenges with that, there's lots of them around. So we wanted to define what that meant. And having a registration expired within 12 months or no license plate on it would be considered an inoperable vehicle. We added waste bins now that we have the waste containers, the carts that we have, so that garbage is to be placed properly into those containers and not in bags at the curb. There's sections to deal with pools, hot tubs, and the lack of fencing. And how do we actually enforce that? Retaining walls is a big thing as well, but deteriorating walls between properties and it becomes quite an issue to make sure that they're kept up to the standard. And then we've also seen areas of town where hedges and shrubs and whatnot are encroaching or overgrown sidewalks and whatnot, and having the ability to have short-form wording and ticketing for that so that we could get those issues resolved a little sooner. So those are the highlights of it in the Community Standards Bylaw, changes to it. The main body of the Clean Yards Bylaw remains and it is, you know, working towards a cleaner, healthier environment in Kirkland. And we've had a lot of success with that since it's come in. Any questions?
Counselor Kylie.
Yes, Mark, I'm particularly interested in Part Four, Administration and Enforcement. I know we had an incident in town where an elderly lady's house or yard, the neighbor next door, the wall caved in on the neighbor's basement. And it's, it's eroded away half a lot, the fence has gone in. We did go in and secure the property as far as locking up the fence so nobody could go in that backyard. But is this new as part of the enforcement to pull down or repair or renew any structure? Because at that time, in this, I don't want to drag on this particular case. I think you know the one I mean. Is this new? Because this basically says that they tear down the property.
Yeah. So what it would mean is that under the old bylaw or property standards, that it, notice would be given, then the enforcement really goes into a court process where you'd have to bring it to court and have legal expenses. Bring it, adding, and that stays in property standards as well, that option. Bringing it into the Community Standards Bylaw, we'd have the opportunity to have short-form wording done so that we could have an actual ticketing process if they're not compliant right away, that they're starting to be ticketed and have fines building on them until they've actually done something about the situation.
And that's not in place right now, to my understanding. So the town would be on this property owner's case to make the necessary repairs or make the property safe. Because at that time, basically, I mean, we did secure the property and did what we could under the old bylaws. But they said the only way this lady would, an 89-year-old lady, would have to take this person to court to try to get him to either tear down the property or fix it. So this should help.
Yeah, so we're.
She wouldn't have to take him to court then.
No.
It would be the town.
The same process. We'd provide a notice to the property owner, give them time to comply. And then rather than having to go start the legal process with them, which would be started regardless, that they would be issued a ticket right away that they would be required to pay. And then that hopefully would have them deal with the situation in a more timely manner.
Could we actually force the owner of that property to go to court and get a court order to have him do the necessary repairs or upkeep to bring that property up to standards?
Well, that's what the court process would do, make sure that he meets property standards and building code issues, depending on what the issue is, they're up to building code or it's demolished. This is, bringing it into this bylaw really gives us a one step.
Gives us a step-by-step process.
To go in and give them some fines right off, right away so that they can enact some changes.
It's a good start.
Counselor Morgan.
Thanks, Mark. I really like, you know, how comprehensive this is. My only comment, and it's just a more of a process comment. When we do, like, comprehensive rewrites to things like this, you know, in the past, and I think what the plan is tonight is to read it a first, second, and third time.
Just the first and second. Just the first and second tonight.
So we are just reading it the first and second time tonight? Okay, because, I mean, this is very comprehensive. And it would be nice to have it out there in the public for, like, one rotation and then finalize it. So, okay, thank you.
Yep, good point. Yep.
Guess the question I ask is similar to Counselor Kylie's, is that with these changes, looks like we've added a lot of words and different debris, different types of debris. Does this give our enforcement more bite? So, you know, most of the properties in Kirkland Lake are fine and they abide by the rules and the standards. But there are a few that have been a thorn in, for many years. Does this give more, so if somebody has an old vehicle in their backyard, does this new, would this give more bite to the enforcement part? Because we know at times when a property owner just says, no, I'm not doing nothing, that's sort of when we have to shut down too because it's, so are we giving more bite to our enforcement?
Yeah, and that will come in as well with the short-form wording for ticketing based on the new bylaw so that the bylaw enforcement officer, peace officer, special constable can issue those tickets right away after notices given and proper timelines. They're not respecting that, that they would go to the next step and then it becomes a fine. And hopefully, if they want to continue to pay the fine, that's up to them. But typically, they'll deal with the situation.
Any other questions? So, well, that'll come back. That'll come back, just the first and second reading as a bylaw later.
And that's fine. It'll take a few weeks to get the short-form wording put together. And that'll come back to council as well as what we're looking at for additional opportunities or areas where we want to be able to take it in. And then we have to have that approved. So it'll be a bit of a rulebook, but early spring, late winter, everything should be in place.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, we have the introduction readings and consideration of bylaws. The first one is, that the clerk will read, is for the agreement to lease a portion of 16 Government Road from Karen Sukins.
Moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker. That bylaw 17-001, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement to lease a portion of 16 Government Road West from Karen Sukins, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. All in favor?
Yes, it is for the dollar, yes, yes. All in favor? Thank you. The next one is for the, is to execute a sale for 71 Government Road West to Eugene Ivanoff.
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan. That bylaw 17-002, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of 71 Government Road West to Eugene Ivanoff, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. All in favor?
Thank you. The next bylaw is, and it was discussed at our last council meeting, for the fitness, for the fitness value-added fitness room memberships to complex user groups.
Moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker. That bylaw 17-003, being a bylaw to implement value-added fitness room memberships to complex user groups, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. All in favor?
Thank you. And the next bylaw is one that comes to us every year. It's been coming to us every year since I've been on council. And it's more of a housekeeping bylaw.
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan. Bylaw 17-004, being a bylaw to authorize borrowing for current expenditures for 2017, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. All in favor?
Thank you. And the next one is the first and second reading of the Maintaining Land in a Clean and Clear Condition.
Moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker. That bylaw 17-005, being a bylaw to provide for maintaining land in a clean and clear condition, Community Standards Bylaw, be read a first and second time with a third reading to take place at the meeting of January 24th. All in favor?
Thank you. Is there any notices of motion? Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan. That bylaw 17-006, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held January 10, 2017, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed. All in favor?
Thank you. Counselors' reports.
Counselor Kylie.
A couple of items. My rate on this date, January 24th, is the next council meeting. I believe that is. And after that, we will have a committee of the whole meeting for finance to discuss 2017 budget. I'd ask all councilors to think about this over the next couple of weeks and provide some input during that meeting. It's an opportunity to give direction to our staff. They have started the process. We met yesterday and again tomorrow. However, there's lots of time to still, to input, provide more input. We have come up with some significant indicators that we could save on. Not about to announce that yet. It's a process. But certainly, the first day was encouraging, I'd say, I will say that. So be prepared to provide some input and direction that you'd like to see for 2017. Another item, and I mentioned this to Tony, Timiskaming Municipal Association. Louis Perry, the chairperson, had sent out an email, and I don't think the rest of council got it. There's a quarry of royalty that's paid out by the province. And there's a cutoff point, it's at North Bay. So North Bay and north of it, we do not receive any of that royalty money. So anybody having a quarry, they pay a small, it's a small fee, but it does add up. And why Kirkland Lake was never included, or not Kirkland Lake, but northern Ontario beyond North Bay, it's been a political football. But John Vanthoff, our MPV, said that there is a hearing coming up. And he's asked the Timiskaming Municipal Association to put forward a brief to present to them. His initial comments were that it was favorable that beyond North Bay would be included in this process. I'm not positive on this. I did mention it to Tony, that I thought it included minerals being taken out of the ground. It's so much per ton, it's like two and a half cents. It would add up in northern Ontario in the mining industry. I'm not definite on that. I will get back to you. But I will send that email out so it'll kind of bring you up to date on that process. So that's encouraging if we do get that. It's a little bit of money for the municipalities in the north.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no additional information?
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan. That council adjourned its regular meeting of January 10, 2017 to an in-camera meeting to discuss two items of a personnel nature. All in favor?
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.